We ready to record? All right, we welcome you all out to our weekly meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 20th day of January 2015. We appreciate your attendance here with us today. As you know, we'll remind you again that we are live streaming. So if there's anybody who would like to watch us online or listen, they're welcome to do so. We're excited about that new capability and again, we offer our thanks to our good folks from IT for putting this together for us every week. We're working through a few bugs and we hope to be adding a few more features as we go forward, so thank you so much for doing that. We will begin, as you know, we started last week with a new tradition that has been gone for some time, but we're grateful to have with us today Suzanne Ellison-Ferre, who will offer our invocation, after which our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Javus Starkis from our IT department and the thought of the day by Commissioner Bell. Suzanne, time is yours.
Our Father in Heaven, we gather here today grateful for the opportunity to be able to address thee in a public government meeting. We ask thy blessing to be with those who conduct this meeting, that they will do so according to thy mind and will and in accordance to what thou would have done in this meeting. Thank you, Father, for America. Thank you for allowing us to be citizens in this great land and participate in the governmental process. Thank you for those who have gone before us, who have given us this opportunity that we might live out their dream today of being able to conduct the business of Weber County in this way. Thank you, Father, for all of the blessings that thou hast given us and in this setting. We pray that the people who conduct this meeting, that after their hard work, that there will be a loving and a kind relationship developed through the hard work, that there might be some fun involved and that through this fun, that there might be a sense of community and feeling that we can all work together. We stand here, Father, as soldiers in thy army, and we pray that we might go forward as thou would have us to go forward, and we ask these blessings in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we all know, yesterday was a holiday, Martin Luther King Day, so I thought it would be appropriate to look up some information and I found a couple of quotes that I thought were most appropriate. The first one is, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And then the second quote was, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." So I thought these were some pretty interesting and good quotes by such a great leader that we've had, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate all of you for participating in our opening ceremonies this morning and appreciate Suzanne, thank you for being here, bringing your husband and offering that beautiful invocation, and Javus and Commissioner Bell, thank you as well. We have the opportunity for just a moment to hear from Mr. Mike King and Royal Eccles, who are here joining us today. As you know, we have had a wonderful season this last year as we've gone through some wonderful changes in our downtown area, and one of those beautiful changes has been the open house and reopening of the Ogden Temple that was recently completed by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. So with us today, we have Mr. Mike King, who is the Director of the Northern Utah Public Affairs Group with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and they have asked for just a moment to come to the microphone and talk to us a bit about what has went on during this process. So Mike, come onto the microphone.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, just to clarify, I am on the coordinating council for the Northern Utah Public Affairs. I think Elder Perry is the Director, so...
You don't want that job yet.
No, sir, I do not. Well, it's an honor to be here.
Luckily, I don't have the authority to make that change, so...
Well, Royal Eccles and I are representing Elder Craig G. Fisher of the 70 and, of course, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We're both residents of Weber County. In fact, I'll speak from the heart for just a moment. I, for many years, worked for Weber County and I smiled as I saw Jim Harvey walk in, of course, the Commissioners, and of course, I remembered a really young handsome attorney many years ago that I served on a hiring committee with. I'm so glad he's still here. It's great to see David and it's great to be with you. We wanted just to publicly thank you, the Commission, and the County of Weber for all your support during the Ogden Temple Open House. More than 500,000 people came to the open house, many more. They won't allow us to release the exact numbers, which I'm not sure why, but we'll be obedient, but from July 28th through September 6th, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people came to Ogden City and to Weber County. With those crowds came some wonderful opportunities to highlight the county and, of course, the temple and the beautiful grounds and tabernacle. One of the more challenging issues that we dealt with during the open house was parking, and we wanted to just personally thank you for your advice, your assistance and your expertise at the county level. It was invaluable as we tried to manage all of those parking lots and how to best care for those and to move people in and out of the county and into the city of Ogden. I also want to make mention, I know personally that you were there many times, walking the grounds and being with us, and we appreciate that. As a token of our appreciation, we wanted to offer this public thank you, but we also brought with us a beautiful framed print of the temple. And I challenged the city of Ogden and they accepted, and I challenged the County of Weber that, yes, it is a religious building, but it is also a gem in this wonderful county and wonderful city, and we hope you might find a place of prominence for it somewhere as you do many of the other landmarks that exist in the county. And I want to give Royal just a minute to say thanks. If he has anything, he's told me four times that he has nothing to say, but I want him just to take a moment if he would. And then if it's appropriate, we'd love to just have you hold the picture, and if you have someone that could take a photo, we'll step up and take a quick photo and we'll then dismiss.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you Commissioners for all the help and support that you gave to us. It was a fun event, it was a great summer, and it's brought a real gemstone to our county. Thank you.
With this letter, we actually prepared the letter when Commissioner Zogmeister was here, so Commissioner, we acknowledge you and hope that somehow she might get the thanks as well through the grapevine.
We will make sure that happens. Thank you. Before we go down, let's take an opportunity just to, I just want to tell you thank you for that beautiful print. I can see it from here, but I'm sure as it is displayed in a prominent location in our building, it will be even more inspiring. What a beautiful, beautiful rendering of that beautiful building, and I just want to tell you thank you from the bottom of my heart. There is no question that that building is a center focal point of our community, and we are so grateful for the investment that the LES Church has made in our community and continues to make as we go forward. So we are grateful to be a part of a great partnership in this community. Ogden City and Weber County have been working very well together, and as you saw through the open house, I think that coordination paid off because we saw positive things happening and good coordination all the way through that process. We accept your challenge and we will have that displayed prominently. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, anything else you'd like to add?
Just thank you, appreciate what you've done. I've known Mike and Royal for a long time, and this has been a great thing for Ogden. I've watched the change in Ogden City and it's just been phenomenal, and we're so happy to be part of that with the county, so, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't do a whole bunch, but thank you very much.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Wonderful, wonderful.
Okay.
Before we move on, I just have one more item to address, and that is, as you know, over the last while, there's been an awful lot of hubbub, if you know what I mean, about this guy named Ray Day, who we've kind of grown to like over the years, and the fact that he is retired and will no longer be working for the Sheriff's Office as of last Thursday, is that right? And so, he couldn't stay away, so he's here again today. I've never seen him in his jeans, I've always seen him in full uniform. But he's in jeans, but at least he still has the good-looking black hat on, we like that, so... But the main thing today that I wanted to do is introduce to you the new security officer here at the Weber Center, Deputy Maria Garcia, who has been a Sheriff's Deputy for now nine years, worked for many years as a school resource officer and in corrections, and gosh, maybe a few other things. Maria, would you mind coming and taking the microphone for just a minute and introducing yourself to us and letting us know anything that we should know, right up here in the center?
Good morning. Thanks for introduction.
Welcome.
I've been with the Sheriff's Office for almost 10 years, did some clerk work, and then I went to the Police Academy and worked corrections for about six months, and then I had the best job on the planet as a school resource officer. I've spent about six months over with the courts, some in judicial, or Summit District and Summit Juvenile, and then I was told last Friday that I'd be coming and joining the team over here, so here I am, and here to serve. So whatever you need, give me a buzz and I'll do my best to fill some really big shoes, so...
Well, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you. We grew to love Ray, but I'm sure that you're going to be even better.
Well, I highly doubt that, but whatever you need, I'm here to serve you, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Let's give her a hand.
It was nice to see you, Ray. Stop by any time, Tuesdays at 10:00, we're right here.
All right, we'll move on then with our business. We have our consent items to begin with. First is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $346,347.61. Request for approval of warrants number 317368 through 317552 in the amount of $1,263,484.46. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on January 13th, 2014. Request for approval of recommendations from the County, Weber County Tax Review Committee for partial tax refund on the following parcels. Number 06-180-0003 for $329.96. Number 23-126-0001 for $753.17. And number 12-093-0012, 10013, 0014, 1005, and 12-00, excuse me, 093-0035 for $2,523.29. Item number five, it's been asked that we pull that item off of the consent item because there's some discussion that needs to be held on that issue, so we'll hold item number five. And item number six is a request for approval of contract modification to the contract by and between Weber County and CRS Engineers for the 12th Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $2234,711, excuse me, yeah, $711.00. Everybody understand that jumbled method very in there? Okay, consent items, motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items as read with the one cell, with the one item we took off.
Okay, there is one other additional change that I wanted to make sure, and that is that the last item under number four, number 12-093-0012 and the rest of that line, that one needs to be held as well off the consent item. So the consent items will include everything listed except for that line and item number five.
Oh, I will make that motion with the new information we have.
Okay. I'll second the amended consent items. Okay, motion that we adopt consent items as read, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously, the consent items are adopted. So, how, we'll begin then, I guess, by starting with that item number four, and I guess Nate, is that your issue as well? Or Shelley, do you want to present that to us?
It's not mine.
Jared. Jared. Is Jared nodding his head?
It's actually a tax review item, and the gentleman is here, he wanted to speak about this item. He met with the tax review and had some things to add.
Okay, so is there anybody from the Tax Review Committee that can present that to us? And then have this individual come as well? Shelley, why don't you make... I guess then, are you the staff for the Tax Review Committee? Paige, why don't you come up, tell us, just give us a brief overview of this particular issue, and then we'll have, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Robert Seeger.
Robert Seeger, who wanted to address this.
I apologize, let me get some information here for you. So after meeting with the Tax Review Committee, they had decided to recommend to the Commissioners to approve a one-year refund, I believe. I'm trying to get the information for you.
We have, we have... We are, we have been able to pull up the issue now, so we have it in front of us as well.
I'm trying to get more details for you, I apologize.
Well, Mr. Seeger, why don't you come up and let us know what you want us to know, and in the meantime, we can do a little more research here.
Carrie, can I just explain too, that this was Michelle Maycock's item, and she was finishing right before she left, and unfortunately, she's no longer here, and that's part of our confusion.
All right, Mr. Seeger's welcome.
Good morning. I was just, it's actually closer than I thought. When we went, when I met with the committee, we hadn't really talked any figures, we talked percentages and stuff, and then seeing the minutes this morning of the meeting, it's actually fairly close, it's not as big a concern as I had. The amount they've requested is $2,523.29. I just based it on a, we were looking at, it was misclassified, so we were looking at percentages. And my figures I came up with, based on the same percentages of last year's prepaid stuff, came up to $3,149.37, which is about 626.08 difference. So it wasn't as drastic as originally I thought, we just hadn't really clarified the dollar amounts when I was at the meeting with them. They were excellent to help, and I really appreciate all their effort, but it was closer than I thought, it's just, my figure was just a little bit higher, that's the only concern I had.
Okay, all right, well, before you leave, the way that we handle this type of thing, we have set up the process of the Tax Review Committee. They meet and make a recommendation to the Commission as to what they think is allowable by law, and I will tell you that we make every effort to be fair in any way that we can to the taxpayer, but we also have to follow the statute, and so we're trying to always do the best at both of those tasks. So generally, these go on consent item to recommend or to approve their recommendations, and that's why you generally won't see much debate on these issues because of the process that's set up. But when someone comes in, such as you have today, who would like to speak to the issue, then we obviously pull those off the consent calendar and allow for us to hear any concerns that you might have. So the question I would have for you then, are there any procedural or statutory concerns that you have as to the way this has been approved, or this has been presented or put together? Because we have two options now, we can go ahead and approve their recommendation, we could approve a different number, but we would have to have reason and statutory authority to do so, and we would have to have that identified, or if we think that there is additional information that's needed, we can always come back at a later time and make that final determination. So what would you like to see us do based on those three options?
Well, we were kind of disheartened a little bit because it had been misclassified for three years, and then I understand there's legislation in place that only allows them to go back one year on it. So, you know, the laws are laws, and that's fair enough too, and I'd like to thank them for their effort. They were quite accommodating and they helped us quite a bit, so they were really accommodating, and I'd like to thank them for that. Where their figures came from as opposed to mine, I don't know that there's really a lot of chance for debate as far, you know, I'm sure they've got their recommendations on the amount and I do, so as far as, you know, delaying it anymore, I don't know that it would benefit anything other than, you know, causing a little more effort on everybody's part, so at this time, I would say we probably should just go ahead with their figures. Like I say, it was a little closer than I thought it was anyway initially, so it wasn't as drastic of a change as I thought.
Thank you. Well, we do appreciate you coming and being a part of our meeting, sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
And I, from everything we can tell, the research was done appropriately and the committee has done their diligence, so thank you, we appreciate that.
So, should I go ahead with the motion?
I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we refund tax parcel 12-093-0012, 0013, 0014, 1005, and 12-00, excuse me, 093-0035 for $2,523.29.
I second the motion. Okay, have a motion and a second on the floor, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Motion passes. So we're to item number five that was pulled off of the consent items, which is the request for approval of real estate sales agreement and quitclaim deed for part of parcel number 04-024-0002. Nate, welcome this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's good to be with you today. You have before you a real estate sales agreement and an attendant quitclaim deed with the recommendation to sell a parcel of property. Just on your agenda item, it says part of parcel 04-024-0002, it's not part of that parcel, it's the whole parcel. I think where the term "part" came from is that it's part of lot two in that particular area in Ogden City. But we have a gentleman who, Mr. William Velazquez, who is in the process of acquiring an adjacent parcel, which has a small home on it, and this would just add to the yard area of that facility, and so he's also expressed an interest in purchasing this parcel. It's a rather small parcel, it's four hundredths of an acre, and so it's not a significant piece, it's a non-buildable piece, and therefore the value is significantly less, and the value that has been placed on it by the County Assessors Office is in the range of $600, and that's what we have offered, and that's what Mr. Velazquez has agreed to. This parcel was declared as surplus property back on the 28th of October by the County Commission, and so now we bring before you this agreement for your consideration and approval, and also the signing of a quitclaim deed to Mr. Velazquez. Be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Pierce?
It's good.
Eight.
Contract number eight for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve contract number eight, which is approval of real estate sale agreement and quitclaim deed for parcel number 04-024-0002. I second.
All right, motion is second then to approve and adopt contract number eight between Weber County and, well, excuse me, the real estate sales agreements quitclaim deed for the parcel as listed. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. All right, Commissioners, I'll ask for your cooperation here, we have a lot on our agenda. Most of it is fairly self-explanatory, and we, and of course, we want to make sure that there's proper and ample debate on anything, but we also need to remember that Commissioners have an appointment in Salt Lake City, the Capitol, in about an hour from now, or an hour from, at about 12 o'clock, so we need to leave as soon as we possibly can. So we're going to run through the agenda the best that we can and try and accomplish our business. Our action items, item...
Do you think Jim Harvey heard what you just said?
I hope, I hope so.
That's actually probably four.
Come on up, Jim, be ready. Okay, item number one, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Walkabout Events for a Clinton Anderson Walkabout Tour, two-day clinic being held at the Golden Spike Event Center on February 14th and 15th of 2015. Presenter, of course, is Jim Harvey, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a great event, this Walkabout Tour. Clinton Anderson is one of the clinicians that gives presentations, and people buy tickets and they like what he says. He explains how horses work and how to train them and get more out of that animal, and he is from the land down under, and I don't mean Provo, I mean Australia way. Great event, it's a returning event, he loves our facility, and this year he's expanding actually into our riding arena to the west, and by then we should have a covered alleyway that connects the two buildings, so it'll be a great, really a great experience for those thousands and thousands that attend. It's pretty much a standard contract that takes place on the 14th and 15th of February of this year, and we're looking for approval of that inside the Golden Spike Arena.
That covered alleyway is coming along right now, isn't it?
It just set the sunburst this morning, the sunburst, so as you walk in from the parking lot, you can see it, it's really, it's going to be, it's so cool.
Nice improvement to that facility. Okay, sounds good, any motion on this item?
The contract number...
Nine.
Nine. I'll make a motion, we accept contract nine between Weber County and Clinton Anderson Walkabout.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second then to adopt an approved contract number nine between Weber County and Clinton Anderson Walkabout Tour, or Walkabout Events. Is there discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Passes. Item number two is the request for approval of contracts by and between Weber County and Acorn Productions for Antiques Show and Sales to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center on the following dates, February 14th and 15th, May 9th and 10th, and November 7th and 8th of 2015.
Thank you, Commissioners. Speaking to item number two, I would like three specific contracts, if I could, contract numbers as they're all different dates... And he is from, uh, the land down under, and I don't mean Provo, I mean Australia way. Uh, great event. It's a returning event. He loves our facility, and this year, he's expanding actually into our Riding Arena to the West. And by then, we should have a covered alleyway that connects the two buildings, so it'll be a great, really a great experience for those thousands and thousands that attend. It's pretty much a standard contract that takes place on the fourteenth and fifteenth of February of this year, and we're looking for approval of that inside the Golden Spike Arena.
Well, that, that covered alleyway is coming along right now, isn't it?
It just set the sunburst this morning, the sunburst, so as you walk in from the parking lot, you can see it. It's really, it's gonna be, it's so cool.
Nice improvement to that facility. Okay. Sounds good. Any motion on this item?
It's a contract number.
Nine?
Nine. I'll make a motion. We accept contract nine between Weber County and Clinton Anderson Walkabout.
Motion is second?
Second.
Motion is second then to adopt and approve contract number nine between Weber County and Clinton Anderson Walkabout Tour, or Walkabout Events. Is there discussion to the motion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Item number two is the request for approval of contracts buying between Weber County and Acorn Productions for Antiques Show and Sales to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center on the following dates, February fourteenth and fifteenth, May ninth and tenth, and November seventh and eighth of two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, speaking to item number two, I would like three specific contracts, if I could, contract numbers, as they're all different dates. But this is, uh, an opportunity to provide at the top of Utah residents with an opportunity to show and sell their antique items and treasures. There's all types of things, and they come from all different parts of the United States and Canada. They're really, really a, a great show. Uh, they've grown. Uh, this is a show that's been around for the last two decades, but they've gone from one show now to two, then to three shows, which I'm presenting the two thousand and fifteen circuit here today. It's inside the exhibit hall. There is a small admission fee, but the Acorn Production folks do a wonderful job, and we're happy to partner with them in this production. So, we're looking for approval for these, uh, three contracts, please.
That'd be contracts number ten, eleven, and twelve.
It's nice to see that, uh, this is growing. It's kind of exciting to see, um, events that we have one time, and eventually, it's two times and three times and four times. So, I'll make a motion that we approve contracts between Weber County and Acorn Productions for the Antique Show and Sale, contract number ten for February fourteenth and fifteenth, contract number eleven for May ninth and tenth, and contract number twelve for November seventh to the eighth.
Perfect.
I second.
Okay. Motion is second then to adopt and approve contracts number ten, eleven, and twelve. Is there discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number three is the request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and the Utah Cutter and Chariot Association for the Utah State Chariot Championships to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center on February twenty-first and twenty-second of two thousand and fifteen. You're up again, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you. The fastest athletes on the planet compete as teams to run down four-hundred-and-forty yards at our Weber, our Weber County Grandstand and Race Track, uh, on the, on the twenty-first and twenty-second of this year. That's put on by the State Chariot Association. We're, I'm really grateful. This used to be, I'll just tell you, Commissioners, this used to be something that we used to bid for. But over the last five years, I think we've proved ourselves where others have come in and bid, and then they've just walked with their tail behind, between their legs and walked away. And there's no one that comes close to us. We've been able to maintain costs that have been effective for them, and they just keep coming back and back, and they have a good experience. So, this is a two-day, a weekend event for, to, for the state, for the state chariot runoffs on this twenty-first and twenty-second. And, and this, the only change this year is that there's a new president, Mr. Mike Udi up out of Garland, and so we're looking for approval of this particular contract.
I'll make a motion that we accept contract number thirteen between Weber County and the Utah State Cutter and Chariot Association.
I will enthusiastically second that.
Okay. Motion is second to adopt contract number thirteen, and, uh, good work on this one. I know the price is always hard. We gotta keep that in mind, but the great thing is we have the perfect facility for them, and it is wonderful. They, they're always grateful for that facility, so, uh, we're well-suited. Okay. Any other discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number four, the request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Jordan World Productions, Inc., for the Jordan World Circus to be held at the Golden Spike Event Center on January thirtieth through February first, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Jordan World Productions. Twenty years ago was a circus that would come to town. They'd set up and do one performance, then they'd tear down, and away they'd go. We're very, very lucky. Uh, over the last twenty years, this is another particular show that's been produced, and now we'll have five productions, Friday, an evening performance, two on Saturday, and two on Sunday. We enjoy a, a great experience with the Jordan family. Uh, we were able to meet their, uh, their needs as far as a quick turnaround to be able to do a matinee and an evening performance, which is quite a big, uh, flip of the building on our staff, uh, because there's a lot of cleaning that goes on there. But there are literally, there will be tens of thousands that will attend over the five performances there. We're really, really grateful that Jordan comes to us. It's a great circus, a really, a, a good quality, and, and we appreciate them. So, we're looking for approval for the thirtieth, uh, of January, the thirty-first, and then the first February, coming right up.
Any other questions for Mr. Harvey?
Nope. Just, it's just wonderful to see family activities and events out, um, at that facility. And I'd make a motion to approve contract number fourteen buying between Weber County and Jo, Jordan World Productions, Inc., for the Jordan World Circus for February, excuse me, January thirtieth to February first.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. Motion is second then to approve and adopt contract number fourteen between Weber County and Jordan World Productions. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Really, really quick before, uh, Mr. Harvey steps away, I just wanted to say I thoroughly enjoyed the Hough and meeting the Oberbergermeister. Was that close?
Oberbergermeister.
Oberbergen, I'm still not gonna get it. Um, and their, their representation from, from Hough. It was an amazing experience, and it just shows how much partnership that you're doing, um, with our sister city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great event. Great event.
Oberbergermeister.
Other, other dog was saved my day because I got him to say all those difficulties.
Yeah. I know. It was a good play on y'all's part. It was great.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Jim is not gonna leave us, I don't think, because Jennifer's not here, and you're gonna take this next one, right?
Yes, sir.
So, the final one for Jim.
Just when you thought it was safe to go outside.
That's right. Item number five, request for approval of resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing members to the Golden Spike Event Center Advisory Board. Jim?
Commissioners, uh, just recently, you appointed another new member to our board, but this is a reappointment of members who have currently been serving, namely Lori Barrett and Ricky Jorgensen, who provide diversity to our board and great input, and they, but they also do something. So, we're grateful for their service. The terms are four years, and this would, this new term would expire the thirty-first of December, two thousand and eighteen. So, we're looking for the appointment of these two members to our current Golden Spike Board, if you would, please.
Resolution ten.
Resolution ten. I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number ten, appointing Lori Barrett and Ricky Jorgensen to our Golden Spike Event Center Advisory Board.
Second to that?
Second.
Okay. Motion is second then to adopt and approve resolution number ten, appointing members to the Golden Spike Event Center Advisory Board. Discussion to the motion? Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Appreciate your presentation today. We're moving on then to item number six. Is Gary here? You presenting that? Hold it? Okay. We'll hold item number six. Um, you know what? We can, I think we'll go ahead and do it. I'll present it. Is that okay with you? Um, item number six is the appointments that are, uh, to the northern, what is it called now? Northern Utah.
Environmental Resource Agency.
Environmental Resource Agency. So, that's kind of a new era.
And it took a long time to figure that new name out.
Um, as this thing started to come together, there were, uh, there were an awful lot of suggestions as to what the name should mean and what should it, what it should infer, so there's no question. But this is a, a cooperative effort between several different, uh, jurisdictions to look for opportunities in, uh, waste management and, uh, recycling and that type of thing. And so, this is, the, the entity has already been created. Um, it's been functioning for some time. It used to be called Nerla. Now, it's expanded and changed, um, and, and functioning very well. But, uh, we have, from our jurisdiction, Weber County, uh, two, uh, appointments to those, uh, to this board that, that come up and need to be reappointed. And the proposal is that Commissioner Gibson and Commissioner Bell be appointed to fill those two terms, those two positions. Any questions, comments on that? Okay. Motion?
I'll make a motion, approving resolution number eleven, appointing Commissioner Gibson and Commissioner Bell to the Board of Directors and Operations and Management Committee of the Northern Utah Environmental Resource Agency.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second then to adopt and approve contract number eleven, uh, appointing members to the Board of the New Era. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven, um, request for approval. Excuse me. Gotta catch up with technology here. Uh, request for approval of a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Weber County, appointing the county representative to the Weber Housing Authority Board. Um, so, looks like I'm presenting this one as the Weber Housing Authority. Under their bylaws, a commissioner must serve as a member of that board. Um, Commissioner Zogmaster had been serving there, and our proposal is that, uh, Commissioner Ebert, who has been working with, uh, this same portfolio, uh, since his entrance into the commission here a couple of weeks ago, be appointed to fill that position on the Weber Housing Authority Board.
Oh, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that, resolution number twelve, that we appoint Commissioner Ebert to the Weber County Housing Authority Board.
Second.
All right. Motion is second then to adopt and approve resolution number twelve, appointing Commissioner Ebert to the Weber Housing Authority Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. As you can see to the members of the public, this is one of those meetings where there's a lot of year, beginning-of-the-year organization that needs to be done. We still have a little bit of more of that to go, so you'll see some more of this over the next few months, weeks, maybe even months. Item number eight, request to approve an amendment to the local sales and use tax, the ramp tax, to fund recreational facilities and cultural organizations, including art, museums, and parks, providing for an additional ten-year enactment period, as authorized by Weber County voters. Dave, I'm gonna let you explain that one. It's got my name on it, but I think you'd probably be able to explain it better.
Be pleased to, Mr. Chair. As you are aware, in the November fourth election, the voters approved an opinion question, that's how it's labeled, uh, for the commission to move forward with the reenactment of a ten-year period for the ramp tax. This ordinance simply does that, keeps all other things in place on the ramp tax ordinance as it now stands. So, I'd recommend approval.
So, this is the act, action that actually authorizes the continuation.
So, what kind of number?
Ordinance number one?
Ordinance number one. I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance number one, the ramp tax, to extend for the next ten years to two thousand and twenty-four.
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second then to approve and adopt ordinance number one, amending the local sales and use ramp tax, um, and extending it for an additional ten-year period as outlined. Is there any discussion to that motion? Okay. Seeing none, it'll be a roll call vote as well.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine, request for approval of resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Weber County appointing a member to the Powder Mountain Water and Sewer District. Commissioner Bell?
Yes, um, we have a vacancy on that board with Commissioners Zogmaster, um, not here, and so we're, I make a recommendation that we, uh, um, resolution number thirteen, that we appoint, um, James Ebert.
I'm over here.
James Ebert to the, um, Powder Mountain Water and Sewer District.
I second that.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second then to approve this resolution, which would be resolution number thirteen, I believe.
Yes.
Is that right, Fatima? Um, appointing Commissioner Ebert to the Powder Mountain Water and Sewer District Board. Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number ten, request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners appointing a member to the Ben Lomond Maintenance District. I'm, I think this is the cemetery board, right?
Correct.
Brooke, you wanna present that to us?
I will, absolutely. Thanks, Commissioners. Today I bring before you one vacancy on the Ben Lomond Cemetery Maintenance District Board. It's a four-year term. Uh, will run through December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. The notice was published, uh, for the thirty-day, um, according to the Utah State statute, and we received two applications for that one vacancy. Um, we had an application for a reappointment of Bruce Thorpe, who is currently on the board, which his term is expired, and then an application from Mr. Toby Maleski.
Well, we have two qualified individuals, my friends. We have, uh, a resolution, or, excuse me, an application from Mayor Maleski from Pleasant View, as well as Bruce Thorpe, who we all know well. So, uh, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'll make a motion that, resolution number fourteen, that we reappoint Bruce Thorpe to the, uh, uh, Ben Lomond Cemetery Maintenance District.
Commissioner, would you like to?
I'll second.
Second, or make a different motion?
Well, I just, I've reviewed, um, the applications, um... Mayor Maleski is a wonderful man, but there's some recommendations on, um, Bruce's application that I, that I, are individuals I feel strongly about, that I respect their opinion, so I will second that.
Okay. And I, I agree. I think Bruce has done a fine job on this board, and I think, uh, that consistency there would be a positive thing, so...
Well, and it's not a dying board. Some people think it was, but it's really not. Leonard?
This is why we skip him on the thought of the day, Leonard. All right. Any other discussion to the motion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, we will call for a vote. And let's see, that's a contract, right?
Roll call.
Oh, that's, that is a, is. Okay. Roll call vote. Fatima?
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
And Chair Gibson?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate that presentation. Okay. We're to item number eleven, request for approval of an agreement buying between Weber County, excuse me, buying between, we, yeah, Weber County and the Utah Department of Natural Resources, kind of in a different order than I'm used to seeing it on the agenda, for the Weber County EWP project. Jared, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. It looks like that order's on the next two also, so I apologize. Swap it next time.
You understand when I say it backwards?
Uh, this is, uh, as you read there, this is an agreement between, uh, DNR and Weber County. It's actually an agreement that we will be reimbursed through DNR, so it's the second portion of the reimbursement, um, as you are aware of it, Chair Gibson, of the two-point-four million approximately two years ago that was, that was, uh, given to us through the state. So, we're more than welcome to accept the reimbursement and help us along with that project.
We're excited to have that money coming back into the coffers that we've already put out.
Is that a contract number? Contract fifteen. I'll make a motion to accept contract fifteen between DNR and Weber County for a EWP project.
I'll second that.
Motion is second then. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, I'm just, can't say enough about the partnership there, Jared. We've been able to bring together an awful lot of partners to this project, and we're grateful to that. State partnership is held up. It's into the bargain. Okay. Item number twelve, uh, Jared, as well, is a request for approval of a contract buying between Blue Review and Weber County for the management of Blue Stake Tickets.
Yes, um, the, uh, number, item number thirteen, there's actually the contract with Blue Stakes. The contract with Blue Review is to help organize those, those tickets as they come in. Um, instead of getting a stack of tickets, so we have to organize and figure out who's digging where and how that's all working out. It's all electronic. It's all web-based. Um, very excited to get back on board with Blue Stakes again. We needed to be on board with them and give us the opportunity, when anybody's digging in our right-of-way, to go out and, and make sure we mark where our utilities are at and, uh, make sure they're not digging into our utilities.
So, you understand the agreement, Commissioners? You've had a chance to review it. Do you have, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt contract number sixteen buying between Blue Review and Weber County for the manage, management of Blue Stakes.
I second.
Okay. Motion is second then to adopt and approve contract number sixteen between Weber County and Blue Stakes. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And the last for Jared is the request to ratify a contract buying between Blue Stakes and Weber County for the marking utilities within the county right-of-way.
Uh, yeah, Commissioners, I just wanted to make a change to that. It should also be request for approval of a contract, so I just wanna make sure that's for the record. It's not to ratify.
Okay.
Um, but again, this, this is, is the contract with Blue Stakes. Um, we're planning on getting back on board with them on a yearly basis so that we can, again, mark our utilities within the right-of-way where, where residents will be digging when they need to.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? It's pretty self-explanatory.
I'll make a motion that we accept contract number seventeen with Blue Stakes and Weber County.
All right. Second?
I second.
Motion is second then to approve and adopt contract... Motion is second then to approve and adopt contract number seventeen. Is there discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jared. Appreciate your presentations. Okay, to our next item, which is public comment. If there are any from the public who would like to comment, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Douglas, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity. Uh, I'd certainly like to take more than three minutes, but I'll do the best I can to try to condense this in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to say that Commissioner Bell, your thought for the day, said if, uh, you need to speak up, if you have concerns, well, I have concerns and I'm here to speak up. Uh, particularly, uh, we've conversed over the time, the last, uh, few months. Uh, I wanna particularly make sure that, uh, our concerns are put on public record for this purpose. I've come here to address you and kind of rehearse some of the things that we've talked about before. But I wanna go over them to make sure it's on the public record and it's recognized that we have concerns and I want to make sure that they're addressed. Uh, in that regards, uh, of course, our concerns are with the, uh, Little Weber cutoff and with the EWP project and how it's going to impact us. The canal from the Weber River through our property and a couple of other properties and, uh, out to the, what's called the Little Weber stream. And, uh, it, this greatly impacts our property, as I've discussed before. And we've gone through this discussion many times and there's a little history on that. Uh, we've lived in Warren many times. Our families live there. We had an uncle, other neighbors there and we've been through several floods. I particularly remember nineteen fifty-two, nineteen eighty-three, and of course, two thousand and eleven. So we're familiar with the floods and what can happen, damages, duration, those, those kind of things. For those reasons, we want to impress upon the county. Uh, the reasons why we don't think that the current plan to put a concrete canal through our property, uh, should be accomplished, because we've proposed several alternatives that we think are much more economical and more efficient and will do more. I have several of those I'd like to present, but today I think I'll just say number one. And probably the most effective one is the Weber River, uh, itself. Now, the Weber River's been there a long time. We know that. And it's been, uh, uh, yeah, a facility or a waterway that has been, uh, inundated recently by, and it's reduced its flow. So my alternative that we've talked about even since two thousand and eleven, after the flood, we discussed with Lance. I've discussed it with commissioners in, uh, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, with engineering, with contractors, with the contractors engineer. We've walked it, we've talked it and we've presented these alternatives. The one I'm talking about today, the first one, is trying to, uh, open up the end of the Weber River to allow it to flow so that when in the spring or in high water, it will be able to help clean itself. Because as, as a farmer, I know what water does and if you slow water down, it drops sediment. If you speed it up, it'll pick up that sediment and flush it out. Now, from my understanding, the EA was supposed to, uh, work on those headgates at the end of the Weber River. And at the ru, uh, river, there are three, uh, forks of the Weber River. There's a South Fork, a Middle Fork and North Fork. South Fork takes very little water. The river doesn't wanna go there, hasn't wanted to go there for a long time. So, uh, but the Middle Fork is the main course and the North Fork is the secondary and that, those two carry most of the water. Now, in times past, like in nineteen sixties, uh, a dike was placed in front of those rivers so it could move water from the middle of North Fork to the South Fork area to make sure there is water in that area of the Ogden Bay Refuge. Right now, that dike acts as a dam to the river and holds up the flow. I was under the impression that the, uh, this project was going to increase the size and width of the headgates that were in those areas to let them, let the water flow out. Uh, in the south, I understand that that has been enlarged. The Middle Fork has been repaired, but there's nothing there to enlarge, uh, increase the flow of water through that during high water and that's the main course. And let me dwell on that, first of all, because as far as I know, there is a, uh, a twenty-foot rotary in the Middle Fork and a couple of other headgates or overflows, uh, to allow water through. Now, if that's the main course of the water and high water, water's coming through there, it's, it's basically dammed off. It stopped. Uh, the impact of that and the other headgates, where the headgates are higher than the bottom of the river, they effectively stop or dam off that river and reduce its flow. And doing such, it'll drop sediment upriver. It drops sediment four miles upriver, including our place. So I've seen the bottom of our river in, increase in sediment. So it's, uh, it doesn't flow like it used to. One easy way to observe the effect of these, this dam and the headgates and not the effectiveness of that waterway is to observe, going out Twelfth Street, if you go west on Twelfth Street, past nineteen hundred, you cross the river the first time as it goes north. If you look there, that is a, is, uh, fairly narrow, especially now or in the summer. It's narrow, probably ten feet wide, six to ten feet wide in some areas and the depth's six inches to maybe a foot, foot and a half. And that's very, uh, that water flows through there very fast. And on the north side of the road, you can see, uh, where it ripples across the gravels there. If you go about three miles further west, where the, the river makes the turn, comes south and look at that area, that area is, the water runs slow, it's wide and it's deep. And you look at the inflow and the outflow and the outflow doesn't match the inflow. There's a lot more water standing there than comes in. So that would indicate to me, as a casual observer, as a farmer, that somewhere that water's being held up. And the only place in that river is out there at the Bird Refuge where there's dikes are. I, I would still recommend that a lot of this money be put in the Middle Fork and open up that so there, instead of twenty foot or forty foot, that that's more like a hundred and twenty feet. So that when high water comes, you can open those headgates up and let that water flow out. And it's where it wants to go, where the river wants to flow and help pick up the sediment and clean that river. I did some calculations and I found out that if you, and just doing an estimate, if the bottom of the river is forty feet wide and you want just one foot of clearance, to clear one foot of sediment out there, you can increase the flow by seven hundred and fifty, I think it was fifty, uh, cubic feet. And if you go, let's see, I gotta look at my calculations here. Anyway, I can get the exact numbers. But anyway, it will increase the flow of that river just by naturally removing the sediment. So if we could open up that end and spend the money there, instead of, and other areas, you can open up that water, open up those headgates, let that water flush through there, clean itself up. And over time, it'll clean out the sediment in that bottom of the river. And eventually it'll, even the four miles, it'll try to pull that, that sediment out of the bottom and increase the flow. And if you can get, uh, uh, no, it was one foot, you can get up to two thousand second feet, if I remember. My calculations and I can't find them right now, but anyway. Uh, I can get those calculations. So there's one alternative we recommend, that's spend the money there instead of through our place. Our place takes a, a half mile of concrete, uh, ditch, thirty feet wide, uh, eight feet deep. And like we've said before, we don't understand why I need to go through our place when there's other alternatives to that. This is one I've, uh, suggested, we've suggested for three years. And, uh, I don't know if it's, anything's come of it. Even in the EA, it said that they were gonna improve those areas. And as far as I can tell, as far as I know, only the South Fork was improved. The Middle Fork was not. The North Fork was repaired, those headgates. There's about sixty feet of headgates there. They were repaired and fixed. But the bottom is still higher than the bottom of the river, which acts as a dam, which reduces the flow. And if that was opened, I think that would help, yeah, in your goal and the objective, increasing flow. You can get, uh, one to two thousand second feet on there if you get the right amount of sediment out of the bottom of that river. And that could be done naturally. It won't cost you, you wouldn't have to dredge too much. But open the headgates and when high water comes, open those up, let that water flow. And that should, in, in four to five years, that should definitely increase the flow out of that river alone, which would match your goal in going through our place of trying to get that thousand second feet. I have other alternatives. I know my time's up. I don't know if you want to spend more time. I've got other alternatives. If you wanna hear from, I'll be back. This will be continued. I know I've taken a lot of time. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harv.
Thank you.
Um, as we have, uh, as we have talked in the past, uh, we recognize that this is a, there's a lot of options here and a lot of, uh, challenges to deal with in this project. It's a comprehensive, uh, solution to a comprehensive problem. Um, and many of those, uh, solutions affect individuals and we understand that. As we have talked in the past, we have, we want you to know that we'll continue to be aware of those challenges that, that face each of these property owners individually and try to minimize those impacts to the very, very, very best of our ability so that we can accomplish the goal and at the same time, um, not have the negative impacts that, that we face. Okay, we'll move on then to our assignment of the Pledge of Allegiance and Thought of the Day for Tuesday, January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, at ten AM. Um, Pledge of Allegiance, um, let's see, I hadn't thought about this one ahead of time. Uh, looks like, uh, oh, Jared, Jared offered. Ricky, we'll get you next time. And the Thought of the Day would be Commissioner Gibson, if I remember right, you were last week. All right, and so we're to our final item on the agenda and then we can get to our appointment. Commissioner, motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.